As we do, can I have someone certify closed session for us, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that WJ- the Williamsburg James City County's School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that the only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Robinson? I'm gonna call you aller all night. Ms. Robinson.
Um, Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. And is there a motion to amend the agenda tonight?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda at item 10.01, so add 10.01. The agenda description would say move to accept the recommendation from the superintendent to reassign employee number 105483 from the role of administrator to the role of classroom teacher to include the appropriate salary placement on the instructional scale for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Before I ask for a second, that looks like then we would move item 10.01 down to 10.02 approval of personnel actions, and then the current 10.02 to 10.03 approval of purchase requests and budget transfer for Matthew Waley Borla replacements. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. All right, item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 2021-22 school year wraps up this week culminating with our graduation ceremonies at Kaplan Arena on Friday. We're so excited to celebrate our graduates and wish them well on their future endeavors. To that end, the celebrations of our seniors are well underway. Yesterday evening, the Jamestown High School class of 2022 paraded down the Duke of Gloucester Street, now a WJCC graduation tradition, and earlier this evening, we celebrated Lafayette High School on Dog Street as well. We encourage our community to come out and celebrate the War Hill class of 2022 tomorrow evening, and the parade steps off at 5:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Dr. Heron, any board members with a report or an announcement?
Um, yes, Ms. Ordigo and I, we had our meeting with the Student Advisory Committee, and they'll be bringing their annual report to us on June 21st, so stay tuned for that.
Great, great. Looking forward to it. Anyone else?
You may want to mention the absence of two of our board members tonight.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. We are missing tonight Ms. Cook, who had a family engagement, and Ms. Young, who's hung up in an airport, tried her best to get here. All right, thank you for that, Ms. Hummel. Let's move on to item 5.1, public comment. Dr. Beers?
Uh, it is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers are shamed from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And our first speaker is Robin Pavloski.
Good evening. My name is Robin Pavloski, and I'm a citizen of Jame City County. I took the time to read over the SEL learning standards tonight, and here's what I'm concerned about. First, as I said last time, parents have not been given any choices about whether or not they want this program for their children. I am not against psychological therapy. I am against this being the main part of the children's education. This is very dangerous, as teachers are not trained therapists, and it is promoting values in a way that may or may not be what a parent is teaching at home. By forcing teachers to be the values police, you are taking away critical time for teaching the subjects our children currently are doing so poorly at, math, reading, et cetera. This is a disaster in the making. As Dr. Karen Effren, M.D., pediatrician and researcher, says, "We are moving away from academic learning to a learning that focuses on attitudes, mindsets, and values of children, which there is great difficulty among adults to agree. SEL is a major danger to academic learning, health, privacy, and scientific accuracy. The research base is not there despite all the claims by proponents. SEL requires assessments, surveys, often collected without parental knowledge or consent." The assessments are put in state longitudinal databases that can follow students for life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pavloski.
Our next speaker is Jessica Anderson.
Hello, I'm Jessica Anderson. I attended the meeting, this past meeting, May 17th, and was pleased to see a more balanced view during the public comment. So I was incredibly disappointed at Ms. Young's closing remarks about the use of the word "false." The reality is that many interpretations of SEL, which have occurred during the last few meetings, have been false and disrespectful to the families and students who have been positively impacted by SEL. It is not an easy task to get in front of this board and other community members, who may or may not agree with our comments, and speak. So to then feel targeted by a member of the school board seems like an added stress that could hinder comments and members from coming forward in the future. As I said, I was taken aback that a singular speaker was called out overstating the simple fact that SEL has been continuously misrepresented. I also wanted to touch on Ms. Ordigo's comment about us talking past each other. That's not our intent. I think a lot of people like myself and other members of the community have reached out via email countless times to tell you how we support a lot of decisions that have been made, and how we want to continue to support teachers and staff. And sadly, that's rarely pointed out in these meetings. So a lot of the more vocal community members that come forward, they don't hear those comments that are coming forward to you privately, and I wish they did, because it makes us seem like the minority when we are not. I want our teachers and staffs to feel supported, and we want the members of the school board to understand and recognize that past rhetoric and continued talking points are negatively affecting our staff and the morale of amazing educators. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Slakovic.
My reason today for taking time away from my family is because I have to come here and remind this board to whom they are obliged. You do not represent teachers. They have a union for that. You are not here as an extension of the administration to help share and push forward their agenda. You are meant to be a voice of the people who placed you here today, while all except the two who obviously served the people who appointed them, using sneaky tactics to pass their own personal agenda, which is moving our school system to a point where we have a mass exodus of not only students now, but also teachers as well. This should be a huge alarm that you are not doing a good job. We will now see not just the continued drop in enrollment this coming year, but the percentage in which children are leaving is increasing exponentially. On top of that, we now see teacher resignation and retirement increased by almost fivefold. You are not doing a good job. When it was clear that masking small children was doing more harm than good, parents came out by the dozens in an overwhelming majority and asked you to lift the mandate, but you ignored our pleas. You can go back and look at the meetings. Eighty to ninety percent of the people who spoke en masse asked for them off. Then you hold a book review where nearly every single critique was negative, without a single glowing review, and still you ignored our voice. We just need you to listen to the people, because you are not only by the people, but you are also for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slakovic.
Excuse me, our next speaker is Michael Hassan.
Good evening. He was enormous in my hand, and hard, yet so silken that I just ran my finger down him in wonder. He hissed, cock twitching, as I brushed my thumb over the tip. I smirked as I did it again. So I leaned down and put my mouth on him. One second, he was in my mouth, my tongue flicking over the broad head of him. The next, his hands were on my waist, and I was flipped over onto my front. Those are just some of the words in a book that is in every one of our high schools. Every one of our high schools. Kids can take this book out. My daughter could take this book out if she wanted to. We're all adults, and this type of language is not appropriate for adults to read, for adults to hear, especially not appropriate for my daughter or our children to hear. But sadly, these books are currently in our school libraries, and they're not just in our high schools. They're in our elementary and middle schools also. If we, as mature adults, can't stomach to hear this, how can it be okay for my daughter or children to read this, read these books? And it doesn't matter who approved these books, because you are the ultimate responsible party. What literary value does a book like this have? I don't care if the little bit that I read was the only part of this book that is pornographic. This book is uncalled for in our schools and needs to be taken out today. Thank you.
Oh, sir. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Burke.
Good evening. There are no children in here, correct? Dr. Heron, you lead a great division where kids can learn about-
Ma'am, you're asked to address the chair.
I'm addressing everybody.
Your comments need to be to the chair, just so you're aware.
They are to everybody, and I'm going to mention everybody on the board.
Are you are to address the chair of the board. That is-
I'm addressing the room, and the whole board is here, and I am-
This is a simple thing, ma'am. These are the rules.
This is a simple thing. I have the freedom of speech to say everybody's name who's on the board, including the superintendent's name and all the board's names. Correct?
Can you reset her time, please? Just address the chair.
Well, where's the chair to address?
I'm right here, ma'am.
I can say anybody's name that I wish to say. I'm not talking about personnel issues. Do you understand that, Mr. Dowell?
We're about to move to the next speaker.
Has my time been restarted? Is it about to go? Should I start?
I haven't. I didn't.
You can start.
You lead a great division where kids can learn about anal sex from their library books. What do retired community members think about the schools offering materials about anal sex and child rape? Have you removed the obscene book that a Virginia judge said should not be given unrestricted access to minors? The lawyers still mulling this over? Do you think it's a good idea to have a book with a drawing of a boy holding a knife to slit his wrist? Take some time to decide about this book. Is it good to have books for kindergartners that ask them to question their gender? Is that uplifting and age-appropriate? You have a lot of common sense. Does it make sense for the libraries to have a book that explicitly details the violent rape of a young woman? Some of you are new to the board, but do you think sixth graders need access in school to a book that touts masturbation and the opposable thumb? Mr. Chair, this is the common ground you seek. What parents want their children to focus on sex and violence? Don't just tell a parent to fill out a complaint form. The division needs to create a plan to clean up the instructional materials. Senate Bill 656 requires it by January 1st, 2023. Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
As you can see, I was addressing the entire board.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Our next speaker is Tanja Whitaker.
Whitaker. Hello.
My name is Tanya Whitaker. Before COVID, I was not aware you all existed at all. So this is a huge step for me to be here and participate. So things that I wanted to discuss is the transgender scenario. This does not belong in the schools. The majority of transgender kids or people have had sexual assault. If anything, you guys need to be investing your time investigating whether any of our kids have been sexually assaulted. And then also, most sexually assaulted victims know they're perpetrators, or sometimes it's in the household. I would love for you guys to discuss this. I had brought this with my special little notes in it, because I know you guys are discussing to change him/her or he/she in your textbooks. That's coming up later, so you discussed this. Sorry, I'm very nervous. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the passing of our students from one grade to another. My daughter is currently a junior, well, she'll be a senior next year, with only having half a semester to finish, so three classes, I guess. Her GPA, however, is not that great. We're looking at a 2.4 something. So she's barely passing. This is a D. It is unacceptable. I, you guys have not even caught up to the teachings that you've had during COVID. She cheated through the whole entire sem-, the whole year. I need you guys to fix that. I will also state, I'm sorry-
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Do you have-
Has walked out of the school building on multiple occasions.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Our next speaker is Alan Parham.
Hi. Good evening, Chairman Dowell, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Alim Parm, President of the Williamsburg James City Education Association, WJCA. A reflection, looking back onto this year, many of us are very excited that this is the last week of school. However, we know that this year has brought a lot of twists and turns, and has led to a lot of burnout between a lot of employees, which has led to many of them leaving the education profession. I ask that our school division leaders collaborate and look into strategies that not only help with teacher retention of our current employees, but also bring resources to help our teachers for the next school year. That way, they can be adequate to help our students with our mental, social, emotional, and academic needs. I know that this has been a tough year for all of us, and we thank you for your important role in the division, and we look forward to providing more comments and collaboration as the year continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parham.
Next speaker is Andrew Kason. Kason? Kason?
Kason. Kason.
Hello, my name is Andrew Kason. Thank you for adopting the recommended social studies textbooks last month. Your actions showed us that you are willing to take both, take bold action when it comes to providing educators what they need. Now, I would like to ask you once again to take bold action to meet the needs of our students and educators by addressing the issue of student behavior and discipline. This year was an overwhelming, overwhelmingly challenging year. Our current system and policies are not sustainable nor equitable. According to the Village Initiative Equity Report, WJCC is one of the worst school districts in the state when it comes to disproportionately suspending students of color. And the level of student conflicts, apathy, and defiance are clear evidence that we now, more than ever, need to rethink our student code of conduct and the disciplinary paradigm that we operate under. That's why I call on this board to empower the superintendent to implement restorative practices. Move away from the zero tolerance model. The code of conduct should include restorative practices in more than just Level 1 of the leveled responses to behavior in the code of conduct. Recently, we have hired additional assistant principals for the high schools. Allow them to become subject matter experts in restorative practices or facilitators. If you hire more assistant principals to enforce an inequitable policy, that's not going to change anything for the better. Give principals more tools to deal with student behavior. Give students subs for when they need to participate in restorative circles. The zero, I'll leave the rest of my comments.
Yes, thank you.
Next speaker is Anne Marie Smith.
Good evening. I'm sorry, just on the way out there. Forgive me. I apologize, I'm not quite as prepared tonight, so hopefully I get my point across. But I wanted to talk about the agenda item with the policies towards the free and reduced lunch and food services that is going to be considered. I just wanted to make sure that the time is taken to review this. There is a lot of information out there that the money's tied to help pay for free and reduced lunches that come from the federal government, even possibly from the state, may have conditions on them. They may force this board to pass policies in the future based on those conditions that you may disagree with. Some of that could be detrimental to the student population. So I would be careful when you review that to make sure about those ties. And furthermore, I, I'm not understanding why the policy states here that lawsuits will not be filed from the board, which would be the whole school system, if a student cannot pay for a meal or has a school debt. So in other words, does this mean that you could just keep getting food all year? And if I didn't pay, so what? There's no consequences, and there's nothing the school can do about it? And I can tell you, once somebody figures that out, they're going to continue to abuse the system, and it would be unfair to the people who do rightly pay. In addition, I question that, you know, you've got, okay, thank you.
If you have more, if you don't mind leaving it for us?
No, it's just the policy. But thank you. I think, I think I got my point just to look at it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And our final speaker is Sean Tremblay.
Hi, sir.
All right, so I'll just like last time on to address social, emotional learning again, especially in light of recent mass shootings. I'm not going to turn this into a 2A argument. I'm going to address the social, emotional components that lead to something like this. We do know for a fact that most mass shooters are average age 18. They acquire their weapons legally in most cases, and they usually project that they're, what they're going to do, and then they follow up and do it. That being said, 18, high school senior, or just out of high school, somewhere along the line, what if somebody had intervened in this kid's life in middle school going forward? Teaching children how to express their emotions and how to show compassion for others can only have good consequences, and I don't know why that would be contrary to anybody, any family's value system. Your kids aren't with you for six hours of the day, and then there's hours when they're not with you, and they're in their room, and they're being educated online by other people that don't share your values. So what if we gave them the tools to navigate, to build relationships that are healthy, that they can deal with their emotions in a healthy, responsible way, so that we have emotionally healthy children out there that are going to become emotionally healthy adults in society? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
That's our last one.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Okay, and thank you to all of our speakers that came out at a late hour, last minute. Thank you, guys. We'll move on to item 6.01, pre-K construction sites feasibility study results. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're pleased to invite a guest from RRMM Architects to join us tonight and to present our pre-K construction site feasibility study. And Mr. Keever, I believe, is going to introduce this, this item on our guest this evening.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Yes, Dr. Heron, thank you. Just trying to get the presentation loaded. Wanted to introduce the board to Rob Burz and Larry Simmerson from RRMM. We have been working with RRMM since late January on a feasibility study to look at our preschool facilities, to kind of help make a determination about next steps relative to adding additional pre-K space. And they have completed that feasibility study. We uploaded in board docs for you this afternoon, the feasibility study as well as the slides, and this evening Larry and Rob will take us through that so that you can have a better understanding of what the possibilities are. Please have a seat, Larry, Rob. There you go.
Make yourselves comfortable.
All right.
Have water?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Mr. Keever. Chairman, Board, Dr. Heron, appreciate you having us here to explain our feasibility study. As Ms. Keever mentioned, my name's Rob Burz. I'm with RRMM Architects, and I'm with my senior associate Larry Simmerson. And as Ms. Keever said, we've uploaded this study. It's been uploaded to board docs, so you'll have it in front of you, and we'll have it up on the screen. Okay. And we'll go through this pretty quickly in order to leave time for your questions. I imagine you have a long schedule ahead of you. Figure out your clicker here. Perfect. Okay. So on the heels of your in-large study, very in-depth in-large study of childhood, early childhood education in Williamsburg James City County schools, a goal was set to accommodate 650 students in the-
hundred and fifty students in the program. The design team was asked to study, what would it look like if we put two new preschool facilities adjacent to existing schools to share facilities like food service or gymnasium? How would those fit on those properties? What would that look like? And each one of them would have three hundred and twenty-five students in it and eighty staff and we have a construction budget of thirty-three million. And so we dove right in. That's backwards, forwards, and one more. There we go. And the first thing we do with a study like this is understand the building that we're talking about. We were given a net square footage of thirty-two thousand square feet and we did some programming with the Bright Beginnings team and came up with a final program of forty-six thousand square feet to accommodate three hundred and twenty-five students at each location. And what we do then is create building plans, very simple building plans to test on the sites, efficient plans that we can make sure we got everything covered. And that is included in your document there. The next step is we try to understand exactly what's needed on these sites and with, as far as additional buses and cars, drop-off areas, play areas. And then we look closely at all nine of your elementary school sites, layering that criteria on it to decide where should we be looking? What are the best accommoda, sites to accommodate these buildings? And we identified five sites from a, you know, high level, looking at enough area, places where we get the building adjacent to the existing school. And Blatant, Montague, Matuaca, Clarebird Baker, and Norwich were the ones that were identified. And this document here that you have gets into a little bit of depth if you want to zoom in and read on some of that. The, we look closely at Department of Education criteria for outdoor student space. And through that and all the other criteria, we identified for these two additions, the most likely candidates Clarebird Baker and Norwich. So that's where we spent a lot of our effort there to dig in. We'll show the, show those plans in a minute. I want to talk about budget versus what we think the costs are. We understand a thirty-three million dollar construction budget, about a three-point-three million dollar design budget or soft costs, which is about ten percent. We deal with costs every day, so we do understand construction costs and how crazy the market is now. So we, we look at Department of Education latest costs for schools all over the state and it's about three hundred and eighty-three dollars a square foot for the most recent. This is an elementary school. And if we think this is going to be bid out to a contractor at the end of twenty-three, we'd have some escalation on that. And so the formula that we're showing there is three hundred and eighty-three dollars times seven-point-five percent escalation times the square footage of the projects in here, about a thirty-eight million dollars. Soft costs are really fifteen percent for a project like this and we explain what soft costs are below. So in the end, it looks like there might be about an eight million dollar delta between what your budget is and what the possible cost. Now certainly, we can build for more, we can build for less, but we're really just talking at this level, just averages, what we're talking about. If we look at a proposed project schedule, your study's, you know, somewhat complete. We think you could have a design team on board in the fall, allowing for a year of design and permitting, which is an important part of it, the permitting, and about a little over a year and a half for construction and be in by August of twenty-five. So now we're going to look at a few site plans, what we, what we saw when we looked at mainly the two ones that were the most likely candidates for this type of addition. Clarebird Baker, you can see on the screen there, you enter there from the northeast, from the main road and you've got your bus drop-off and your parent drop-off right there at the front. As you move around the site counterclockwise, you have the parking and on to the back, you have a grade drop and you have your service and your play fields back there. So when we lay that forty-six thousand square foot building and its associated parking and driveways, you can see how much of the site it consumes. And, you know, it's, it's self-evident from, from looking at that, that it's really a tight site and you're sacrificing a lot of the play areas for the, the school. We, we did four different land types and here's another one we tried. We tried to squeeze it up towards the top of the site in a straight line type of shape and that does seem to preserve a little bit more of the play area. But you can still see that it's over seventy percent of the, the site is impacted. So we said, well, what happens if we do a smaller one? It just doesn't meet the three hundred and twenty-five student criteria and so we came up with about a sixteen thousand square foot footprint and it seems to work a lot better. It's not quite as massive. You still have a lot of drive, driveway and drop-off for the additional bus and parent drop-off. We then looked at Norwich Elementary School and again, you're entering from the right side of the east side. You've got your parent drop-off up front, your bus drop-off as you move around counterclockwise to the top and your play fields there in the back. Kind of in the top middle, you see a very large stormwater structure, basically a pond or dry, dry pond. And when we laid that same footprint on there, we get this. And so you can see how a lot of the site is impacted. And you can't really know all this until you run through the exercise. So that's, that's what we've been doing with all the different sites and different configurations. We tried a different model there, just a different shape, but still the same amount of impact. And we said, well, what happens if we try that small site and we really squeeze tight down on the, the access and, and parking and that's what we did and it's doable. Tight, but doable.
I apologize, that last, was that the same number of students served as?
This is another smaller, yes, smaller footprint. So this one happens to be a hundred and sixty-three students plus or minus.
It was one sixty-three CBB?
Yeah. The smaller one.
Thank you.
We looked at Blatant and because of the way this site is very tight as well, it's also sharing with another school, we really don't have any space for the forty-six thousand square foot addition to this one. This school seems to be designed to have an addition on to the west side and so that's the space that we used in the smaller footprint. The sixteen thousand square foot footprint does work there. We looked at DJ Montague, very tight site on the far east side, this is a big drop in a geothermal well field, we really can't build over there. It is possible to build on the west side, west side, but certainly not the forty-six thousand square foot version, but the smaller version there at the end, easy connection. The challenge here is backing up traffic on to Centerville Road. We think that this version would probably have to reconfigure all the parking throughout the whole site. And there's a, quite a grade drop, maybe ten, fifteen foot grade drop to the south or to the back. And so there's a lot of earthwork associated with this, with this particular version. We looked at Matuaca. Matuaca is, while there's a lot of land there, these are community use fields that really is, we didn't look at that as an option to, to build on those fields and, and they're not adjacent to the school. The only space that's adjacent to the school on the north side seems to be where there have been sinkhole problems in the past. We thought this was probably a no-go. So this is summary of the project challenges as we wrap up. All the sites are really too small for a three hundred and twenty-five student preschool addition, we think. It's possible to squeeze on to Clarebird Baker and Norwich, but we, we fear that it might, this large addition might leave a very little student outdoor space and so we're not really recommending that. If you do decide to move forward with those two additions, we think that you're going to have to consider an increase in budget. And then anytime we add roof and pavement in, on this magnitude, managing stormwater becomes, and permitting for that becomes a, a challenge. Doable, but adds to cost. One of the other things that we don't always consider is an occupied construction, you know, you're, you're operating elementary schools and major construction on those sites can be disruptive. So what are our recommendations? We have three. One would be to build one or more new preschools on appropriately sized, you know, new or existing appropriately sized sites, moving preschoolers into those facilities and freeing up classroom space for elementary students. You could build a new elementary school with a preschool component and keep the other preschool students with their associate elementary school so you continue on your model, but you're, you know, accommodating your elementary school classroom needs. And then the third recommendation or possibility would be smaller new preschools on multiple sites as opposed to two, three hundred and twenty-five, maybe you do four hundred and sixty-three. We have not, we, we don't see a likely candidate for a fourth one. We have identified Clarebird Baker, Norwich, and Blatant as, that, we think those will work for smaller one hundred and sixty-three student additions. It leaves you at four hundred and eight, it puts you at four hundred and eighty-nine students accommodated, which is a little less than your goal. And we think that the budget, order of magnitude budget would be around twenty million for those three projects. So that, I rifled through all that information very quickly and let me just make sure I didn't have any other notes here I wanted to mention. That was it. We're happy to answer any questions, if you have any, or let you move on to your meeting.
Thank you so much. Questions from the board? Not hearing any, okay. On your last slide, I got a little, I became lost on the last one, the smaller new preschools on multiple sites. You, you started out saying, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm probably wrong, that Clarebird and Norwich were the best locations, most suitable locations?
The Clarebird Baker and Norwich and Blatant work with the smaller sixteen thousand square foot footprint.
At the start of your presentation, you mentioned those two, the Clarebird and Norwich, and so you like those four?
Just the, just the smaller, just the smaller.
Just the smaller as well.
We, we studied them because they were the most likely candidates for the, the larger one. But as we started placing all of the, the things you have to have for that building, it just got really tight.
To be otherwise, okay.
Yeah, it's not something we would, we'd want to recommend. We, we do think it's doable, but, you know, it's going to leave you with something less than I think you would want down the road.
Can you remind us, Dr. Heron, what our budget is on this?
Our, our budget was thirty-three million. The, the budget in the actual CIP document at the moment is twenty-five million and that's what we voted on, that the county and city put in, but I think we were assured that that was a, a placeholder pending design and actually some more information about cost.
And what Dr. Heron's referencing is, is a recent liaison committee meeting where we did discuss that, what was in the CIP reserved for these projects. While our funding partners understood that, once we have design, we'll have a better understanding of what the commitment from them really should be. Yes, Dr. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the three smaller preschools and their distribution, their location in, you know, our school division. In terms of that preschool population, I actually like the three because I'm thinking there won't be as much traveling in order to get to the, to the preschool. What are your thoughts about going with three smaller ones?
I think our first idea would have been two because of locating staff and travel of staff to serve all of the students, but obviously two is not going to work very well. When we go to the smaller sites, we will not be able to serve the six fifty as identified in the ANLAR report. We would be coming in beneath, just beneath five hundred if we build all three. So we still would be able to serve all of our current pre-K spaces that are available plus one hundred.
And if, and when we build that next elementary school, if that also contained, you know, space for the preschool program in addition to these three, that could accommodate those numbers?
It could, but if we did that, it would take us back to the model we have now where we have pre-K in several elementary schools. So we probably wouldn't want to go back to that model. We'd want to keep the pre-K in separate, in separate buildings.
Oh, yeah.
I think the recommendation was if we don't build these smaller sites, satellite sites, that we build a new elementary school and add a significant pre-K section to it that would also accommodate our, our future needs for both.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Ordego?
So, so you would, you would ideally have a new elementary school with adjacent preschool space for six hundred and fifty students on one site?
I think it would be not as many as, I think we'd be using some of our current pre-K space and then add more at a new elementary school. And that's just one of the recommendations. What we're looking at and trying to do now is use the money we have to build pre-K standalones. That is another option that the, that RRMM came up with.
Because, because when Dr. Beers just said, you know, eventually we build the, the, a new elementary school with, say we do the three small, then eventually build an elementary school with, with a similar adjacent small preschool. He was saying that would accommodate the extra, but then you said that we wouldn't go back to that model, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
At the moment, we have a model where pre-K is in our elementary schools, so that would be going back to that model that we currently have. I'm not saying we couldn't do it eventually if we needed it.
But I think he meant you could build a, with the same idea.
Sure, a satellite, sure, absolutely.
Like you're doing with the other, like you would be doing with the other three.
If we needed more space, absolutely, I'm sure that would be an option.
Okay.
Absolutely, sorry, I misunderstood the question.
I, I probably, I think I said.
Because what Dr. Beers is saying would, would actually free up the space in our, if we went with the three models right now, it would free up the space in our elementary schools and then give us that breathing room to when we build the next elementary school and then adding those, another hundred and sixty-three or whatever to get us to that six hundred magic number. And we would have four satellite areas, but that actually was working well for, I mean, it's been working well for us to do that. That was, actually wasn't that one of our recommendations at the very get-go when?
Yeah, we, we recommended a new school, additional pre-K space, built in, just like a normal model.
And then, and then keeping our other preschools where they were, right?
Absolutely.
So in a way, this is just buying us some time for, for thirty million dollars.
Oh, for nineteen-seven?
Thirty, for the?
The three, the construction cost for three smaller preschools is nineteen million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred. So that's even under the twenty-five that is currently in the CIP.
I missed that, I thought it was thirty.
That was our initial number.
Can I ask a clarity, a clarification question of that? Is it an additional figure for the three, three schools or can we do the three small sites for thirty-three million?
Well, the, just looking at this, yeah, just looking at the three small sites as six-point-six million apiece, no, nothing else, then I think we're talking about twenty million dollars for those three. There is additional funds needed to reconfigure some of the spaces they would be coming out of and that does not include soft costs, so.
That's not thirty-three million plus nineteen?
It's not thirty-three plus nineteen, it is twenty.
Right, it's the total of twenty.
It's just, just twenty for that.
Not including soft costs.
Not including soft costs and some additional construction costs.
Okay, so with the soft.
I want to make sure I understand that. Thirty-three million was for three larger preschool programs?
For two.
Two larger.
The two larger ones, right. And that was actually about thirty-eight, plus soft costs is forty-four.
We're talking about three smaller ones. The initial cost would be less.
And I would like to take a minute to say that this study really doesn't address operational, ideal, optimum operational. Really, this is just square footage plopped on land and so I think it probably, that's something that needs to be considered seriously.
How are we going about looking at that, the operational side?
I think RRMM did have some thoughts on the, some of the challenges with operations and actually building on the site. Do you want to speak to those a little bit and some of the operational challenges of making this happen?
Well, yes, well certainly, if we're building on existing sites, there's going to be a challenge. It's, safety is very important and so you really have to close off anything anywhere near construction. And so really, it blocks down your site from being used to the duration of construction. There's no doubt about it that, you know, children won't have the place space and, and getting in and out with buses and cars will be a challenge. When I was, I was mentioning operation, it was really more like educational delivery beyond construction. I don't know, we, we don't address what's ideal, really it was just a square footage thing for you guys to consider.
And our delivery model would remain similar to what we And our delivery model would remain similar to what we have now. In- instructionally.
With the three, we do go with the three.
We would consolidate the program into three sites.
And how, how many, how many elementary school classrooms would that then free up throughout the division?
Not sure how many classrooms, but I think the number of students would be just under five hundred. Is that right for three sites? So we wouldn't get even, the reason it's less expensive is because we're, we're not building for six fifty, which is what Annler says we need. We're building for five hundred. So it's a short-term solution in terms of numbers.
So every student that we serve right now would benefit by this as well as, what's the additional number?
The students, the four hundred or three ninety-five that we have current spaces for now would be served and potentially. The one hundred we normally have on a waiting list. But it wouldn't address anyone else we're not currently serving in the community.
What's the timeline on this? What are next steps? I, I, I know what next steps might be for me and for the board, but as far as. The, your RRMM.
Well, what the schedule we showed was if you wanted to move forward with whatever, um, plan you wanted to, if you didn't need any more studying, you said, let's do this. You would put out a request for proposal for a design team, um, interview them in August, potentially. Yeah, start, can start design, a year of design, finishing up next year, a year and a half or more of construction. And you'd be able to serve kids in fall of twenty-five. You know, depends on the model you follow.
Yes, sir.
So, to come back to that. If we're barely able to accommodate four hundred or three ninety-five now. Even though it takes, you know, three years to go from here to the completed project. It's still going to take three, it would still take three, three day, three, three years, whether it was two big ones or three small ones, wouldn't it?
That's correct.
It's still going to be three years.
Yeah, so we'll be full when it's built.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not accommodating any growth in pre-K at all. It will, you know, understandably in three years, we would, we would be full when it opens. But what it does at that point, it, it releases five hundred slots in elementary school. But if you take three years from now, we're, we're moving towards being full again at elementary school. We have any growth at all.
Do we have an, is there an alternative to that, though? I mean, that's what we're going to have to live with, isn't it?
That's what's being funded right now. We can't put a big enough, built, big enough buildings on our two sites.
I think it's also just, if I, if I may interrupt for just a second, i- important to remember. That, that no matter the option, based on our current school footprints. There will be some significant day-to-day challenges during construction. Whether it's a sixteen thousand square foot space or a forty-eight thousand square foot space. That those students, that staff, that school community will see a, I will say, significant impact over the course of the entire project. That's, that's accurate and fair to say, right, Rob?
Very accurate, and I will say that you're still adding sixteen thousand square foot and associated driveways to sites that are fully developed now. And really do not have, it's, it, it does take away from existing outdoor space and flow of sites. Ideally, you would build on new site. These sites are, they work perfectly and they're designed to work perfectly as they are now. They, these are if you need to have something wedged on an existing site. But our two, first two recommendations would be to build new on new sites. That, that's what we presented as our first two recommendations. And, and, you know, we're also thinking long-term, you know, you hope these facilities are here for sixty years, right? And, uh, so when you do it once, you know, you think about the sixty-year term, something like this. That would be our first recommendation.
As far as building two new preschools on new sites, I don't imagine you looked at locations where you might recommend?
Yeah, that, we did not get into that in the study. That's something we'd be happy to help you with, but.
And I think that just would be a discussion with our, our funding partners when it comes to possible land as well as sites. Because if we had the new sites, potentially we would put two larger pre-K sites on them for the future, not just for the present. Which is what we're doing right now. Would be more long-term thinking, potentially.
So, so if I understand you, another option would be find the space, wherever, find the land. Build the two standalone.
Larger sites.
Larger size preschool things there. And then later, when, you know, build the, the extra elementary school down the pike. At least you've got the land there, you've got the infrastructure.
And those preschool spaces wouldn't be impacted then during the build of an elementary school while they were being used?
I, I think they would be, they wouldn't necessarily be linked to an elementary school. Again, that would have to be a larger discussion with our funding partners when it involves land as well. So, so there is a solution, but it's a very short-term solution. Then an expensive solution, it's a short-term solution, and it will dramatically disrupt the three sites. And create, um, not just disruption, but you know, safety issues with children in and out during construction on three elementary sites. So it's, it's a, there is a plan, but it's not an ideal plan.
Can I ask you guys a question? Which, what's, uh, your history been with? Trying to do something like this, adding, adding, um, uh, whether it's a preschool, whatever kind of program is, onto existing.
Yeah, we have a good bit of experience, um, with additions to, you know, occupied schools, and it's a challenge.
So you, yeah, so you've, you've, this is something you've encountered.
Yes.
For, okay, just.
And it's different with every site, but, um, you know, if it's something that you can avoid, you know, that's what we would recommend. But, but some, you know, school divisions, they just have to do it. It's usually, we, I can't say that we've done any preschool additions, Larry, can you think of any?
No, not that I'm aware of, but I'm currently working on a high school renovation and additions up in Woodbridge with students on site. And it's, it's a two and a half year construction schedule, and it's a challenge, a daily challenge.
So for those students, their high school experience is way different. You know, those fifteen hundred students. So educational delivery is a concern that, once you decide to move in that direction, you know, we, we get serious on planning, the phasing.
Your option for two standalone preschools, um, not attached to a, an elementary school, are those forty-six thousand?
It would be a little bit larger. They would need some food service component and possibly, you know, indoor play space or flex space. Not too much larger. Still in preschool, you're still serving in classrooms and, um, you know, we haven't gotten that far. If they were not sharing, we would need to add a little bit more space.
Okay. But they, they certainly would not need as much land as you would a typical elementary school, just because of the age of the students. Because they're not going to be out on a twenty-acre site, so you can actually look for smaller sites. Or maybe if funding becomes an issue, you can build to meet the current needs for the next five or ten years. And if you want to go to six fifty down the road, you can do that through additions as well down the road.
Can I ask a quick question as well? If you compare two smaller sites, you know, normal, that what we're talking about in terms of pre-K. Sites being built in two different places, how does that compare to the building of a new elementary school?
Oh, the cost for a, a pre-K would be less than an elementary school.
For one or two?
Let's see.
So you've land for two ele, two pre-K, brand new, serving six fifty. Is that, how does that compare with a new elementary school on a site?
It's hard to say. One of the variables is the, the, the land itself.
Of course.
With a small school, you know, I've got, and my land is going to be smaller. I'm not looking for large contiguous, you know, twenty, thirty acres. Square foot costs are going to be a little bit higher for the elementary school. They should be about the same, though, you know, cost-wise. I think there's the land is the variable, and then the elementary school cost per square foot, I think it's just going to be a little bit higher.
Is there?
Another thought, yeah. I know we're top, we're calling this pre-K. Right now, there are kindergarten kids in kindergarten classrooms. If you. Are they part of the three hundred and ninety-five? The kindergarten kids, or is it pre?
Just pre, just pre. We have three ninety-five spaces in our elementary schools right now.
Okay, okay. So, so if we call it pre-K, does that, that, does that mean kindergarten kids are going to be in the new facility?
No, just, just, just pre.
Yeah, I think that, see, um, I think that's what we. Yeah, the dash makes it sound like it's, it's pre-hand K. I just, um, because somebody had asked me about that.
Yeah, that's just our preschool.
Pre, that's it, it's a preschool. You just call it a preschool.
Bright beginnings.
Got it, okay.
I think what I'd like to do is, um, well, if I could hear from you guys which way you're leaning. On, on these recommendations. Can I start with you, Dr. Beers? Which way you're leaning?
I like the three smaller, I like the three smaller ones. I think, um. Very soon, though, we need to get a, um, we get a sense of where the city, county comes into play here.
That's coming next, yeah.
I don't think we can go too far down the road with that, but I, I, and I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a short, it's short-term. Those facilities will be permanent. And then, um, and it does give us, uh, um, some time, because I, my vision would be. Okay, we do the pre-K, the pre, and then, um, and it's, at some point, not far down the road, we're going to have to build a new elementary school. And we don't even have land for that yet, do we? Nobody's identified any land. But if you had a, a preschool program at that elementary school, that, that would be four of them. And it, and they would accommodate. So I, it's, I, we keep, I know we keep coming back to this, um, and probably because the county wanted us to deal with it separately. But inevitably, um, we have to deal, we, we have, the, the elementary school has to have, has to play into this somewhere down the line. And, um, so it's just, uh, so I think we, the folks, especially in the county. They have notions about how they think we ought to do this, and, and I think, um. I, I think this is an alternative way.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm asking for each, uh, each of you to weigh in because I also didn't want to, you know, give Ms. Cook and Ms. Young their opportunity. To review this and hear the conversation, get a sense of where they, they lie on this. Because then next steps would be to communicate with our funding partners. We had committed that we would share the report with them, the presentation, uh, with both bodies. And then they would receive a letter from myself, I think Dr. Herron would help me put that together. And give them a sense of what our board would like to see. But, yeah, kind of get some feedback from them, so, Ms. Ortega?
And just based on what was presented here tonight, and we hadn't, I hadn't thought of three smaller options that would come in at that, at that price. I, I like that combination. I like, I know it's not six fifty, but it's a big step forward. It, it would. If we would accommodate all of our current students plus our waitlist, plus free up elementary school classrooms for less than. Or even if it was at the thirty-three million that we were talking about, that, that seems like a, at least something that deserves considerable amount of consideration.
Ms. Huntley? Okay, and Tom?
Yeah, I, I mean, ideally, it would be nice to not have to build on to existing sites and squish people and squi, whatever. But I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to get the extra eight million possibly in our budget. I mean, we don't even have the thirty-three in our budget, or ICP, I mean, so, um, yeah, I agree.
All right, well, I, I want to, um, connect with our two board members that weren't able to be here this evening. And, and, uh, Dr. Herron and I will get to work on communicating this with our funding partners. Really greatly appreciate all of your work and expertise. Yes, sir?
Could we hear what your thoughts are?
I'm sorry, yeah, uh, well, yeah, thank you. I apologize. Looking at the clock and my, and the agenda.
You can't leave yet.
All right, um, no, I do, I agree. I like the three-school option. Um, I, I do see it as a good, a big step forward from where we are and where we have been. I wish, I do wish that we had more information on the, um, recommendation for preschools. Standalone preschools on their own sites, what that would cost. Because I, I, I am concerned, uh, as we've heard tonight about the interruption to instructional day. Uh, that's, that's going to be a big factor for, uh, how long is the bill going to take? Would you?
Probably two years.
Two years.
A little less.
Two years, so, um, but on the whole, yeah, I, I definitely lean towards the three-school option. All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I really greatly appreciate your, your time this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for calling me back.
But it is, it is, it is a step, and, and, um. This is a good time to take it.
We'll move on to, uh, item seven point zero-one, review revisions to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three student code of conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Bergerot has a short presentation this evening on the changes to the student code of conduct. Thank you, Ms. Bergerot.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. Each year, the Student Services Department brings recommended revisions to the student code of conduct for your consideration. The agenda item contin, contains two versions of the student code of conduct. One is the redlined version, which shows all changes. The other is a clean copy of the document, which, with all the changes incorporated. For the purposes of this presentation, I will be referring to page numbers in the redlined version. Effective this year, the Virginia Department of Education transitioned from the previous accountability measures compiled in the annual Discipline, Crime and Violence Report. To a new state reporting requirement of student behavior and administrative response, or SBAR. Last year, in preparation for the new reporting requirements, the WJCC Student Code of Conduct underwent major revisions to align with those new requirements. This year, the committee focused on minor adjustments to align with additions to those guidelines. Committee members were representative of all levels and programs and included parent representatives selected from PTA membership, as well as many staff members who are also parents. The committee met beginning in February and continued through the end of March and had, I think it was five meetings. All revisions were reviewed to ensure alignment with state guidelines and policies. School administrators were also provided a link to make suggestions for revisions based on implementation of the code of conduct throughout the year. The revisions have been reviewed by our attorney. The student code of conduct is organized into three sections. The first section provides general information. We annually update the welcome letter, school year dates, board member names and roles, and the table of contents. The page numbers on the table of contents in the draft will be finalized after all of the changes are accepted and prior to publishing. Throughout the code of conduct, minor wording edits have been made to improve the flow of information. Examples include on page two, multi-tier systems of support, and page four, bus and bus stop expectations. Also on the bus expectations page, a specific reference to policy JFCC student conduct on school buses was added. Information on page five explains the SBAR categories. The five categories are behaviors that impede academic progress, behaviors related to school operations. Beha, relationship behaviors, behaviors that present a safety concern, and behaviors that endanger self or others. These definitions are established for all schools, divisions by the Virginia Department of Education. Each category also has a letter reference, and these coding references are used in the rules sections in the student code of conduct to identify for students and parents which category or categories apply to that rule. The second section of the student code of conduct addresses student behavior. On page six, minor revisions have been made based on recommendations from school staff. For level one, two additional responses were added, seat change and reteaching or remodeling of desired behavior. As you review the rules and corresponding levels of response, you will see. As you review the rules and corresponding levels of response, you will see changes to align with revised state guidelines in the areas listed here. The state allows levels of response to be more stringent than the guideline recommendations, but not less stringent. All revisions presented apply to grades six through twelve. For verbal aggression, response level was changed from a level five, which is a recommendation for expulsion, to a level four, which is a recommendation for long-term suspension. The committee felt that any verbal incident that might rise to consideration for expulsion would be linked to other more serious violations, such as harassment. Last year, the state guidance document had the response level for attendance for sixth, grade six to twelve as levels one to three. This was modified during the year to levels one to two. This correct, correction allowed WJCC to revise the response level back to what had been previously listed in our student code of conduct, which is levels one and two. And finally, the response levels for gambling have been adjusted to align with the response levels provided by the state, and now include level one. There is one recommended revision to the weapons rule in the policy, and this can be found on page fifteen. Revisions to the weapons rule aligns with a revised weapons policy being brought before you later this evening, policy JFCD Weapons, and it's also included in policy JFC Student Conduct. The policy has added wording to more fully identify prohibited weapons included in state code. The third section of the student code of conduct, beginning on page twenty, provides relevant policy information for easy reference by students and parents. Two policies, JFCC Student Conduct on School Buses and JFCD Weapons in School, will be presented to you later this evening. Revisions in the student code of conduct mirror the revisions to be shared in the policy agenda items. This concludes the student code of conduct presentation, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bujoir, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just, oh, I was curious about that, because I think I've asked about knives before. Any knife, because a pocket knife having a floating metal blade of less than three inches. If you have a pocket knife, and it is less than three inches.
It's still a violation, so the beginning of the policy says that a, a knife in general is considered a weapon, but this is designating what would be considered for expulsion rather than a lower-level response.
Okay, just wanna make sure I understood that.
I had the same concern when I read it.
I just have a question about when you said seat change, are you referring to changing their seat where they're sitting or seat, uh, with attendance, which, which seat are we talking about?
Where they're sitting, either within the classroom or on the school bus, at the cafeteria table.
Tom?
So, when, um, Mrs. Young and I met with, um, the policy committee last time, we, as school board members, we have been hearing about issues with electronic devices and cell phones. And that's on page eleven of the, the code of conduct, and, um, it seems like the question in this is, the policy seems fine, it just seems like it's not being followed. And so I wondered, um, and, and in particular, I'm talking about K, grades K through eight, all personal, um, owned portable communication and electronic devices must be turned off and stowed away at all times. That is not happening in our schools. And then grades nine through twelve, students may bring personal-owned equipment for instructional purposes as defined, and must be supervised by a classroom teacher or administrator. And, um, I think that these, this policy was prior to our COVID funds that have allowed us to have, um, computer devices for each child now, so, a- at least at the high school level, we had a, a, a little bit of freedom for the students for instructional purposes to have their cell phones for instructional purposes, but that, um, reason is no longer as valid. And so I'm, I'm wondering whether we need to revisit this, this policy to make it more appropriate for our current situation. Um, and I just, I mean, Ms. Young and I talked about this, and we were thinking that, and I think, and I, maybe Mr. Keever was with us, that there was going to be a discussion, and we were gonna be talking about it at the next school board meeting, so, here I am, talking about it.
So, so we did go back, and, and, and I reviewed with Ms. Swinton too, who, who chaired this committee, um, and, and it did not come up in any of the meetings, and it did not come up within the reporting tool that we provide to all schools to be able to direct the committee towards what we might want to look at and review. Um, so, we, we do plan on, on working with principals and seeing what their concerns may be. Um, I agree that I think that there is a consistency in implementation piece that we need to look at very closely, um, and, and, and see how we can improve those practices, um, across schools and across the division. So we are in planning stages to be able to address those things with administrators during this summer, and it certainly can be a, a portion that next year's committee looks at in detail.
Julie, um, are, are you talking about the cyberbullying stuff?
No, I'm talking about on page eleven of the redlined document, when it talks about the use of electronic devices and inappropriate use, so it.
Oh, right, okay, I see, I see.
Um, because I, I think from a board level, we're hearing of issues at a board level, so it, maybe it's not enough. So I don't know whether anyone else wants to chime in, I've probably said enough.
Definitely, cellphone usage is a, a issue with instructional time when teachers are teaching. Um, I think they should be put away in a backpack during instructional time, and I was just wondering on the bus too, they used to be considered projectile i- um, objects, and I don't know if that's still an issue on the bus, are they considered projectile objects? Okay, that, you weren't allowed to have any kind of devices that could, you know?
Throw.
If, be thrown, or, you know, if they're, you know, so anyway, there was a big thing a while back by that. But yes, I do, I would love to, um, talk more about cellphone usage.
You lost me there, I'm sorry, students throwing their cell phones?
Well, I meant, there used to be, you couldn't have, eh, on buses, you should not have had any kind of objects that could put, you know, the bus jolts and things fly, and so things were supposed to be tucked away and safe.
I see.
And so we've heard of students on buses taking pictures and doing things like that. Um, and so I was just wondering, at one time, you weren't allowed to have any kind of handheld devices on the bus, and I didn't know if that had changed.
Gotcha.
As well.
I mean, it does, it states clearly that they are not, they're supposed to be turned off and stowed away, so I don't know what, when the decision was made or how the decision was made, that that's not the case, it's just, it's, it's constant. I mean, and, and there was, so my son, um, and I was totally fine with this, so I'm not trying to say this was a problem, but he was a student videoed something that happened in a classroom that was totally nothing bad, but then it was posted by someone else on Facebook, which I didn't mind, but if I did mind, that shouldn't really occur during, in a classroom. So, um, there's no way to contain that in the current s- state. I mean, and I liked, I liked the thing that was posted, so I'm not trying to say I had, you know, didn't have an issue, but.
Dr. Heron?
Yeah, I think there's room for us to go back and, and revisit with, with principals and make it definitely a piece of the discussion early next year as we go into this process again, um, to understand what's possible in, 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 in a classroom to, to make sure the focus is on instruction and not, not a cellphone. So, thank you for your, your comments and concerns, I, I know Ms. Bujoir has taken it, taken copious notes and, and taken it back to the committee.
If I can ask on this, um, what were the outcomes, um, years ago with this policy, and the policy was disregarded by a student, a teacher saw it, what was the outcome?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Mr. Young, sorry.
I'm trying not to say.
Level one, level two, for not obeying the rule. Again, it's always had a range, and so I think it depends on frequency too, if, if it's your first offense versus third or fourth or fifth or tenth time, so, um, that's why we have a range for all of our rules. It, it depends on frequency and severity.
And I think in reality, in the classroom, from what I've heard Dr. Worley say on several occasions, as we've talked about this, is it sometimes becomes more of a disruption to say every minute in the classroom, put your cellphone away. I mean, it literally would be a constant in the actual classroom, Dr. Worley, do you wanna speak to that, are you behind me, or? I, I know there's a concern with that can be just as disruptive as actually using it.
So I think it, it, we talk about voice of all stakeholders, it's a, I, I see this as a big change that we've gone through as a society over time, of our norms and expectations and who carries phones where they are, and, um, it became something that uh, would, uh, would become almost argumentative if, if every day we're, we're policing, you know, put, put all your cell phones away, are they off? The expectation is they don't interrupt, disrupt, uh, my, my most recent experience on a daily basis as a principal was at the high school level, and we, we focused on making the classroom engaging and inspiring, so the kids are in, are in, participating in lessons, and not interested in their cellphone, now we know teenagers are always interested in that, but, but setting that expectation at the top of the class, you know, this is not the time for phones, they need to be put away, um, and, and I've had lots of conversations with parents that feel um, very strongly on both sides of the coin, I want my child to have the phone, I want, I wanna know where they are, I want to be able to, you know, I'm not, I'm working, I need to make sure they get home okay, I wanna be able to talk to them during the school day, and then I've had the other side. So I think it's something that is a, a bigger discussion, and I like the idea that Ms. Bujoir is gonna bring principals into it, and we can talk about it over time.
And also, it's with the, um, earbuds, um, I, I witnessed a student that didn't hear instructions for, um, because the earbuds were in and loud, attached to the cellphone, so that's a safety issue in my, if a fire alarm goes off or, and you don't hear, that's a safety issue.
So it sounds like we have some work to do, and, and certainly we're, thank you for your comments tonight and concerns. Dr. Worley?
And it is a level one through two, it says, by the way.
Is it, okay, thank you. Well, I just wanna say thank you to you and, and to the committee for putting this, uh, new code of conduct together, and, uh, are we adopting this tonight, right?
At the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay, all right, it's, thank you, yeah, yeah, we're discussing under policies as well, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seven oh two, review federal programs grants.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, annually, we bring to you an overview of the federal program grants, and, uh, Ms. Ford is here to present this overview this evening, and again, a short presentation, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Tonight I am pleased to present the proposed grant applications for the federal programs titles one, two, three, and four for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. To begin, I will review the purposes of each grant. Title one provides personnel and resources that supplement academic programming in qualifying schools. Title two supports recruitment and training of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title three supports language instruction for students with limited English proficiency, and title four provides funds for programs and activities to improve students' academic achievement.
Seems to be a night of technology challenges this evening, thank you for your patience. Oh, the slides are moved.
Here we go. State funding for the grants is formula-based and informed by several factors, such as student enrollment and free and reduced lunch data. Based on guidance from Grant Specialist at the Virginia Department of Education, the grants are written with level funding using the current year's allocation. When the state releases updated allocation amounts in the fall, we will submit revisions or amendments to the grants to align them with the exact allocation WJCC receives. The purpose of the Title One grant is to provide all children with significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. In alignment with statewide educational reform efforts, Title One emphasizes funding for continuous and innovative programming that supplements our work on school improvement goals. It further aims to help meet the needs of all students through effective instructional programs and continued teacher development. Title One programming in WJCC prioritizes the use of Title One funds for direct services to students. Positions currently funded in part with Title One funds include the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, the Federal Programs Data Analyst, and the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader. The grant fully funds the Title One Literacy Coach, seven Title One literacy teachers, one at each Title One school, and two math intervention teachers. Additionally, the grant funds part-time literacy and math tutors. Other priorities for Title One programming include providing ongoing professional learning and coaching to support classroom teachers to understand their students' needs and deliver responsive, evidence-based instruction, and supporting parents and families to be actively involved in their children's education through parental involvement programming, and the provision of high-quality learning tools for use at home. Finally, Title One supplements literacy and math instruction at seven of the nine elementary schools in WJCC. At the targeted assistance schools, Title One staff and services support children in grades kindergarten through third. And in a school-wide program, all K-five students and staff benefit from Title One programming. We anticipate that as a result of the staff's thorough work to complete a rigorous needs assessment, Matthew Waley will be awarded school-wide status for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Title Two funds are intended to increase student achievement consistent with challenging state academic standards and improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders. A priority for Title Two funding is recruiting and training highly qualified teachers and leaders. Another focus in WJCC for the use of Title Two funds is to support the implementation of collaborative teacher teams in all schools. Collaborative teacher teams implement the following actions through a cycle of structured collaborative meetings that focus on the effectiveness of teaching and learning. Selecting an instructional standard and setting a goal. Identifying an instructional strategy aligned to the standard. Examining student work generated from common assessments. And evaluating student performance, teaching outcomes, and the effectiveness of the strategy that served as the focus for the teaching team. Additionally, Title Two funds partially fund the salaries for our elementary literacy coordinator, secondary math coordinator, K-twelve science coordinator, and federal programs data analyst. Federal and state regulations require that students whose native language is not English and who are not fully proficient in English be provided with specific language instruction and other programmatic services to ensure that they attain proficiency in English and meet the same rigorous academic state standards as their age-appropriate peers. Title Three funding is used to supplement local funds to support this specialized instruction. Additionally, Title Three funds are used to provide high-quality professional learning for educators serving our multilingual learners and to meaningfully engage their families and our school communities. It is our proposed plan to continue to utilize Title Three funds in a manner consistent with division initiatives and in alignment with the four pillars of our program to serve our multilingual learners. Building programmatic capacity, building instructional capacity, building linguistic and academic capacity, and building family-community engagement capacity. To that end, our elevation platform is an integrated information and instructional learning management system specifically designed to meet the needs of educators serving multilingual learners. The Imagine Learning Platform is a computer-based suite of individualized adaptive instructional experiences designed to enrich the language acquisition of multilingual learners that also includes extensive offline intervention tools and materials to facilitate teacher-led, highly-targeted small-group instruction. We also intend to utilize funds to support our Language Instruction Summer Enrichment Program as well as our Multilingual Learner Parent Resource Center, our Family Learning Workshop Series, and Community Outreach Programs. The Virginia Department of Education offers the opportunity to transfer Title Four funds to other grants. Our team opted to transfer the funds to Title Three to increase technology, enhance instruction, and support family engagement specifically for our growing population of multilingual learners. We anticipate receiving Title Four funds for the coming year and intend to continue to use the allocation to support the expansion of our digital instructional resources and support the multilingual family and community engagement coordinator position. In closing, I would like to thank Dr. Patricia Tillman and Ms. Jessica Gatto for their leadership for the titles two, three, and four programs. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you. Questions at all?
I just have one. So if the Title Four funds were not transferred to Title Three, what would they be used for within Title Four?
We would use them to support the academic achievement. We could focus on technology and other specialized instruction. Dr. Tillman is here and could provide more information if you would like.
If, if there's more, sure, yeah. Dr. Tillman, how are you?
Good. So my question was if the Title Four funds were not transferred to Title Three, uh what would they be used for within Title Four?
Absolutely. There are three key parameters that Title Four funds can be used for under the federal regulations. One is well-rounded students. Two is safe and secure uh schools. And the third one is for enriching experiences such as CTE, career, and technical education, uh job-based work experiences, things of that nature.
Safe and secure schools. That piques my interest given the recommendation we just had. Uh, should we be pulling money away from that effort?
I think the total amount of money involved in the grant is a hundred and eleven thousand. It would not go very far towards any of our safety and security initiatives. Therefore, we've tried to put it on the instructional side for multilingual learners.
If I could add one thing additionally, it's not safe and secure in terms of um infrastructure for the school division. It's safe and secure in terms of uh social-emotional programs for students, um things of that nature.
I see, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Alright. Well, that was my question. Thank you so much. Any others?
I really appreciate your work and as always, uh pulling these funds in. Uh, it's, it's a monumental effort, I'm sure. So thank you for all you guys do.
Alright. Seven three, review authorization for VHSL memberships for the coming school year.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. This is a, an annual uh event as well. And Dr. Worley is going to take us through the VHSL membership applications for this year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. Tonight I am presenting information on our annual VHSL membership application fee that allows WJCC student athletes to participate in high school varsity athletics and activities through the Virginia High School League. The VHSL requires the annual membership fee plus an additional fee to obtain catastrophic insurance for athletes through the league. There are a couple of points to bring to your attention regarding this year's application. There are several components to the annual fee. First, each school pays eight hundred dollars plus thirty-five dollars for each varsity activity participated in the previous school year. And this means we pay thirty-five dollars for each sport we participated in during twenty-one, twenty-two. Additionally, an insurance formula is used to calculate the fee per school. The league directs us to use the previous year's roster to provide an estimated number of athletes by sport. The fee is five dollars and fifty cents per student. The league directed schools to use the most recent rosters to project, project our participation numbers for insurance purposes. Our current application uses rosters for twenty-one, twenty-two. The individual applications for each school are attached to the agenda item. And this year, the cost for the VHSL membership fee is thirteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions about the applications at this time.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hummer.
I'm asking on behalf of Ms. Cook, um but I, I'm in her corner too and just making the annual plea for um adding lacrosse as one of the sports in our school division. Uh, a lot of our uh similar school divisions in our area uh have gone to offering lacrosse. And I think it's a, a really uh popular sport that would um attract a lot of interest. So I'm just doing my annual plug for lacrosse.
Thank you.
For boys and girls.
Of course.
My son, when he was four or five years old, he, he wanted to play lacrosse. He thought he did. We won't talk about that. But he would always call it the cross. I want to play the cross.
It is a lot of fun.
There's a student advisory committee. The, the students also requested lacrosse.
Yeah, it's a fun sport to watch and play, so.
It is. And we have a lot of students, I think, involved in club sports. As now, we, we do realize it's a significant budget thing to take on. And um one other consideration is the teams that we could play, although it's growing, there's a lot of travel involved um because we, everyone in our current Bay Rivers does not play lacrosse. So there'd be some more travel um that we'd have to take into consideration.
As Bay River, so as the Bay River schools do add, I think it, it does become maybe a more doable, a doable thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Worley. Thank you so much. Alright, um seven four, review appointment of VSBA voting delegate and alternate delegate. Um, I can take this one, Dr. Heron. Unless there is um a desire for a board member or two to take on this role to represent our board, I would be happy to continue in that stead with Dr. Beers as our vice chair and our alternate. I'm seeing heads nod and thumbs. Okay, moving on to, you go with that, Dr. Beers?
Uh, yes.
Alright. Item seven five, review request for proposal two zero two two, one zero two two, architectural services for Lafayette High School Annex Building. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to introduce this item this evening for the renovation of Lafayette High School Annex Building nine hundred.
Uh, good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Uh, Dr. Heron, I'd like to say tonight there were four short, short presentations. So I'm going to have four short presentations for you as well. All of these agenda items. Tonight's proposed agenda item for your consideration is to review RFP two zero two two, one zero two two, which is the architectural and design services for the Lafayette Annex Building nine hundred. Funding for this project was included in the FY twenty-two CIP in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And the project includes architectural services to produce detailed designs, construction drawings, specifications, contract documents, and to obtain the necessary related regulatory approvals for the construction of a breezeway and renovation of the building nine hundred. The scope of work for this project includes a program and schematic design, design development phase, construction document phase, bid and award of the construction administration, and project closeout and system startup. A request for proposal was issued on April sixth, the due date of May the sixth. And again, as I said, funding for this project was included in the FY twenty-two CIP. The superintendent recommends the school board review the information and be prepared to vote at the June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Question for Mr. Snipes. Pretty straightforward. Alright, we'll let you move on, sir. Thank you.
Item seven point oh six, uh again, uh supports go for safety, security, and support for, for your consideration is to review IFB number two zero two two, one zero eight eight, which is the asphalt pavement and repairs at Jamestown High School. The project was approved in the FY twenty-two CIP, and funds are allocated in the FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three CIP budget for this project. The scope of work consists of stripping, milling, repaving, and restriping select the areas of the parking lot at Jamestown High School. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item. And detailed of, uh detailed vendor and budget information will be included at the June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting. The superintendent recommends that you review the project information and be prepared to vote at the June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
And were there other um schools associated with that CIP plan?
Um, I think with the actual asphalt pavement, we, we take different schools every year on a cycle, and we, we assess what, which schools need network.
Yes.
Right, Mr. Snipes?
Great. Alright, sir. Item seven point zero seven.
Item seven point zero seven, for your consideration and review, is the purchase request uh for the, and budget transfer for Matthew Waley boiler replacements. Um, just recently, uh, we had two boiler, a boiler that went down at Matthew Waley, and it needs an emergency replacement. The reason this is being brought for your consideration tonight is because we need lead time to get those boilers in and be able to place those boilers into operation before the new school year begins. So Matthew Waley currently has two uh boilers, but since one of them is, is broken, we have to dismantle the other one. And by dismantling it, you make it inoperable. So that's why we're asking for two boilers to be replaced tonight under annual contract number one nine, one three, seven, three, nine. And the scope of work again will be to demo and tear down and remove the existing boilers, provide and install two new boilers, reconfigure the hot water piping, uh reconnect the existing gas lines, and start up and verify proper operation. The total cost of the, the boilers, two boilers, is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And tho- those funds will be transferred to the operations and equipment, be transferred to the operations equipment replacement line from instructional salaries and benefits. The superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and to be prepared to approve the Matthew Waley boiler's replacement and the associated budget transfer this evening and under your action items.
And that's action item ten point zero three now. Dr. Beers?
Uh, are we talking about one, replacing one boiler or two boilers?
Replacing two boilers.
Both boilers.
Yes, one boiler has gone down, but in order to get to that boiler, you have to dismantle the other one, which makes it inoperable.
Alright, here's a question. When we install the two new boilers, is there a way to install them so that if this happens again, we don't have to pull both boilers?
I'm sure they will review that. Um, but I was in there the other day, and it's a pretty tight fit down in Matthew Waley, as you know.
Yeah, I know.
There's not, not a lot of wiggle room under a nineteen thirty-one building.
Inoperable, you mean hard-broke, will not work ever again.
Yes, will not work. You have to dismantle it in order to get to the other boiler.
And so once you dismantle it, that you've got to?
Yeah, it's no need in trying to put it back together.
And what's the age? They're the same age?
The boilers were replaced in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah.
So they're both the same.
It's just a matter of time.
It's a matter of time. You also have a CIP, it's in the CIP to replace the HVAC system in the next couple of years at Matthew Waley. And those boilers will not be replaced when we do that because they're being replaced now.
Okay.
Okay, and last one for you, sir. Seven eight, seven point oh eight.
Tonight, uh, this proposed agenda item supports goal six of the strategic plan, and it's consideration and review uh of RFP two zero, two two, one zero, two six, which is facilities condition assessments. The school division is interested in soliciting responses from architectural and engineering professional services for a comprehensive study of all eighteen facilities. If you recall, in twenty fifteen, we performed a facility condition index that was good for ten years, and that index is about to expire. One of the things we would like to do with this index, it would help us inform preventative maintenance as well. It could help us inform on our CIP projects in the next ten to, ten to fifteen years. The school division is seeking information that will, like, again, identify investment priorities and support predictable funding for capital renewal at these facilities over the next ten years. The scope of work includes general condition of all buildings and major components, annual operation maintenance funding levels, cost estimates for corrections, and future uh capital renewal costs, and timing and cost of future, future building component maintenance and or replacement. A request for proposal was issued on May third with the due date of June third, twenty-twenty-two. Funding for this is allocated within the FY twenty-three budget for operations. And the superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to award the contract at the next meeting.
Alright, I'm not hearing any questions for you on that. It seems really straightforward and something that we absolutely need uh to be committed to. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we look forward to supporting that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item eight point zero one, strategic plan update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley and Ms. Wall will present uh the last two goals of the strategic plan that the board has not heard about yet, goal one and goal three. And I believe Mr. Walker is going to lead, lead us off this evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. We're here to bring you an update this evening on our focus strategies this year for goal one of the strategic plan. Goal one of the plan focuses on academic achievement and college and career readiness with a commitment to preparing students for success in post-secondary education and careers. School year twenty-one, twenty-two saw a continued effort and focus on several goal one strategies. For example, the focus on targeted instruction, getting students engaged, and attending school regularly, and offering individualized student support as needed were paramount to student success. And yes, there are multiple strategies under goal one. And in previous presentations this year, we've provided updates on student performance, attendance, and assessment data. Tonight, we will highlight two focus areas for goal one. Promoting positive relationships in a student-centered environment and expanding opportunities for students to participate in authentic workplace experiences. We promote positive relationships and provide a student-centered environment to meet students at their level and challenge them to reach their highest potential. Building positive relationships is an essential component of all we do and was especially important this school year as we all returned to in-person instruction five days a week and re-engaged with critical routines and school procedures. Well, how did we do this? Schools set the stage for in-person learning with our leadership teams being very intentional about rebuilding and enhancing connections with students, with colleagues, with staff, and of course, with the families. For example, many schools have hosted outdoor staff celebrations, provided many tokens of appreciation throughout the school year, nurturing positive relationships and morale, continued meeting students at their level in small group instruction, as you can see in the picture, and scheduled many school spirit weeks and family school spirit nights with local businesses, all in a concerted effort to promote positive relationships. In the transition back to in-person learning this school year, elementary teachers across the division strategically used morning meetings, also known as class meetings, to engage students, recapture a sense of community in their classrooms, and establish a safe and trusting environment. This structured daily practice of about fifteen minutes starts the school day on a positive note by fostering collaboration, kindness, and acceptance within a student-centered environment. Elementary schools will continue this practice next year. Another example of promoting positive relationships is how James River Elementary Staff made a commitment to make one hundred positive phone calls to one hundred families on the one-hundredth day of school to share the positive student recognitions with those families. And they did it.
That's awesome.
You heard a couple of great examples of the work done at the elementary level. Now we'll share a few of the many examples from middle and high school. The pictures on the left show students at Tuano Middle School having the opportunity to be tiger rolled. Students were nominated by teachers for being outstanding role models, exhibiting positive behavior, and were examples of the principles of the pride, preparedness, respect, integrity, determination, and empowerment. Each week, at least one to two students per grade level were recognized for their achievements by having a personal upbeat celebratory visit surprise to the classroom from the administrative team, counselors, and MTSS team members. The picture on the right shows a group of middle school students participating in the Lemon Project this past summer. This was a collaboration between the Village and William and Mary. And this summer camp provided students an opportunity to have a tangible experience with exploring African-American history through an interaction with primary sources, family stories, and scientific experimentation while simultaneously building positive relationships and being challenged to reach their highest potential. The James, best potential. The James Blair Middle School community embraced a partnership with the William and Mary Football Team. The football team volunteered by partnering with students on the morning news team to bring inspirational messages to students. They also supported many students with mentoring and tutoring as a way to give back to their community and to promote positive relationships with that student-centered focus. And here are two examples from Lafayette High School. On the right, you see an example of a ship student. On the right, you see an example of a ship student teaching a multilingual student how to make sushi. And on the left, a snapshot of the M T S S faculty and student basketball tournament for those students who were eligible with less than five absences and no discipline referrals during the second semester. The final example, Summer Evenings in the Grove, was a K through twelve collaboration between staff at Jamestown High School, James Blair Middle School and James River Elementary School. During the summer of twenty-one, they hosted three activity nights in July at James River Elementary for the families that live in the Grove area. This collaborative effort culminated with students receiving new backpacks and school supplies needed to start the school year, prepared and ready to learn because staff saw a need and they were focused on promoting those positive relationships with the students and their families. And now Dr. Worley will highlight initiatives in progress with strategy one point four, Authentic Workplace Experiences.
Good evening again. The second focus area for tonight's presentation is the expansion of authentic workplace opportunities, including job shadowing, internships and post-secondary plans for career or college. Some highlights include, but are not limited to, increased participation in our new dual enrollment courses with Thomas Nelson in the Health Sciences Career Cluster. Last school year, the twenty twenty-one school year, enrollment was nineteen students across all three courses. This year, we have forty students enrolled in the courses. Another expansion was the access to our first externship. This year, students enrolled in the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Two, which we had two students in the second section of this this year, were able to participate in an externship experience with one of our W J C C schools. Students were paired with teachers who volunteered to become a site supervisor and allow the students to observe an instruction plan and teach a mini lesson. We also involved vet, we also implemented Vet Science One, a new course for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Twenty-five students enrolled in this course and we are offering Vet One and Two for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And finally, five students participated in the Good Life Solutions Signing Day Ceremony with New Horizons. These students will complete their program at New Horizons and begin a career in their trade immediately after graduation. Additionally, on April nineteenth to twenty-second, W J C C held its first annual mock interview event at all three high schools. We were fortunate to have a hundred and five employer and community representatives volunteer their time to interview our students. We completed interviews with four hundred and eighty-three students enrolled in economics and personal finance class through our high schools. Students received prior instruction on resume writing, interview skills and etiquette. The feedback from students, teachers and volunteers was overwhelmingly positive and we look forward to continuing this tradition event, this tradition annually with the goal of expanding this opportunity so that all students will be able to have this experience before they graduate from high school. On November fifth, in partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College and James City County Economic Development, we held our second industry summit focused on manufacturing and trades, following our two thousand and nineteen summit on healthcare. The summit included fifty-six participants with twenty-six being educators or community members and thirty representatives from local manufacturing and trade employers. This event created partnerships and goals for moving forward and meeting local workforce needs. Williamsburg, James City County is currently in discussion with Thomas Nelson Community College for a potent, potential partnership in creating dual enrollment courses within these trades. We also have our Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee was very active again this year. Not only did the committee grow in size, but new members offered new connections and insights for growing our C T E programming and college and career-ready opportunities for students. The support of this committee helped expand our community partnerships this year, which also included the hundred and five volunteers for the mock interviews. Two previous recommendations from the committee's annual report are also now being implemented in support of our students. The addition of the career, college and career readiness platform of school links and the addition of the C T coordinator position for the next school year. One final initiative through our career and college readiness department was the job fair event facilitated at all three high schools this year. Our career coach organized this opportunity for our students. Interviews took place at all three high schools on May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. As a result of this new initiative, our students have three formal job offers, two verbal offers from one company and four verbal offers from another and four possible offers um, in the works pending a site visit and a student application. Tonight, we highlighted two strategies under goal one this evening. However, we will continue our forward momentum with the development enhancement of all strategies in goal one as we support our students and teachers. Ultimately, teachers, staff and leaders will continue to do what we do best. Meet students where they are, provide encouragement, resources and intervention to move each child forward in their learning. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation for the evening and we are happy to answer any questions before Ms. Wall provides an update on goal three.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I have a comment. Um, I hope teachers know it's okay to steal some of these ideas for the relationship building. I hope schools are sharing because I know, um, people would, when I was a teacher would say, oh, gosh, that was such a great idea. And I say, I stole it from James River or I stole it from. So I hope that, you know, schools are, I mean, I'm seeing this and going, wow, wow, I hope other schools are seeing what other schools are doing and it's, it's not a competition, but share the wealth. So that's one. And then also, um, I just want to, uh, say that I did visit the B Crew, which is fourteen students that were shadowing teachers over at, um, from Hornsby, went over to J B B. And so they're prime and right to go into the Teach for Tomorrow programs and I just don't want them to get lost in the shuffle with scheduling. Um, because those are only three courses and they have four years, but it would be nice, while they're already excited about teaching, to make sure they get into one of those courses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Others?
I would, I'd just say this is a really great, um, presentation and really positive and I was, um, happy to hear about a lot of things I didn't. A lot of these I did know were going on and a lot more I did not and I'm just, it's great to hear about it.
Yeah, I second that and, uh, a hundred phone calls on, on a hundred day, that's really cool. Um, a- and I love the mock interviews. A hundred and five volunteer interviewers. Who are, who are these individuals?
Community members, people sitting in this room, um, senior staff. Dr. Heron was one of them, I believe. We, um, we.
I wasn't asked.
Well, we'll remember that for next year. We have members of the committee sitting in the room. We'll take notes.
I was, I was on the committee. I, I mentioned it a few times, but I didn't and we didn't, I guess you weren't formally invited, but, um, I sort of was just a, I was just a, a fly on the wall because it's just being so new, but I, I did see it witness that go from, you know, pretty blank roster to completely full and to beget, at the beginning of the calendar year, um, there was some apprehension about how ambitious it was. And it, they did it. I mean, they completely filled it out and I had nothing to do with that. I just witnessed it, so I'll say.
And what grade group was this?
The C T advise, Twenty First Century Advisory Committee. I'm saying it wrong. It's a long name, but.
Yes, I, I always.
Yes, but really the, the growth in that committee and the new connections really was, uh, you know, the energy was there and the summits that we've recently been doing and making connections with our local business partners and our, seeing our workforce needs. Um, it's really elevating our opportunity to connect with the community.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much. That's a great report. Good. Great presentation. What do we have next? Dr. Heron?
Uh, Ms. Wall is going to speak about goal three communications and I think she's just found the clicker. Someone was hiding it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on strategic plan goal three and share about the exciting things happening with the communications and engagement team. Goal three centers on the division's commitment to cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. There are five strategies within this goal and we work to support each one every day. Naturally, certain areas receive greater emphasis and the last year was no exception. Over the past year, we focused attention on developing comprehensive internal and external plans and fostering a welcoming culture for our stakeholders. Since joining W J C C schools in January, I've been eager to learn our communications processes and opportunities to strengthen our efforts. A component of this is taking all of the incredible work done throughout the pandemic and before and sustaining it systemically. To that end, we conducted a communication survey with families this spring to identify preferred modes of communication depending on the topic of the message. We had a fifty-three percent response rate among all families. As noted on this slide, the overwhelming majority of English-speaking families preferred to receive timely or urgent emergency communication via text message. This is one point of data that wasn't mirrored as closely between our English and Spanish-speaking families where Spanish-speaking families were more evenly split between receiving phone or text notifications for emergency purposes. For general informational updates from the division, the majority of families noted a preference for email. Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. This data is important to strategically formalize our practices when sharing information with families and developing comprehensive engagement plans moving forward. As previewed last year, an area of focus over the past twelve months has been to create our own content and share our highlights and success stories through our communications channels. While we noted on the previous slide that the website and social media channels were not the top method where families preferred to receive information, we know social media is a valuable and powerful tool in sharing our story and that content is consumed through these channels as evidenced by our data. Our Facebook and Instagram page reach grew by two hundred and forty-nine percent and six thousand thirty-one percent respectively over two years. That's looking at data from May twenty twenty to May twenty twenty-two. And you may think two years is a long time and it'd be natural to see that sort of audience growth, but I'm happy to report we're seeing the impact of our team's focus on social media even when looking at smaller subsets of recent data. For example, we reached fifteen hundred accounts, fifteen fifty-nine to be precise, on Instagram in May twenty twenty-one. In May twenty twenty-two, we reached three, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one accounts. Twitter data is reported differently, so what you're seeing compares impressions during the period of January through April twenty twenty-one as compared with January through April twenty twenty-two. This data isn't surprising to us as our presence on Twitter was quieter over the first few months of this year. I share this to illustrate what we know about our social media audiences. There are individuals already connected with our community, looking for familiar faces in our posts as we celebrate our students and staff. This is further evidenced in our top performing posts. After weather-related announcements, which always receive a lot of attention on social media, the most engaging posts over the past six months are those featuring people like announcing teachers of the year, highlighting school board recognitions and offering a glimpse into student and staff work. This is the sort of content we will continue to generate for social media and will continually dive into our data to deliver content our audience is looking for. Strategy two under this goal is to foster a welcoming culture for internal and external customers by providing ongoing training and resources to schools and departments. The training and resources we provide are responsive to the needs of the division, all with an eye to enhancing a welcoming and inviting experience to our stakeholders. We have continued our every other week staff and family newsletters and standalone mess, uh, standalone communications are issued if the topic demands more immediate attention, but these newsletters are established as the go-to resources for division news and updates. Since January alone, we've also supported buildings with countless incident responses by drafting messages to staff members, families and the community on topics as varied as school safety, administrative updates and COVID case outbreaks. At the division level, we support our colleagues with their communications initiatives. As you heard last month, we've worked with human resources on a recruitment campaign, not only to attract people to attend our job fairs and apply to open positions, but to showcase the excellent working atmosphere in W J C C schools. We've partnered with curriculum and instruction on an ongoing kindergarten registration campaign to encourage families with rising kindergarten students to complete the registration process now in preparation for the fall. In addition to the traditional communications avenues, we delivered bilingual informational cards to local childcare centers and pediatric offices. And be sure to keep your eyes peeled for our ads on the side of Wada buses too. And while discussing a welcoming experience, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our parent liaison, community outreach coordinator, George Rivas. As was reported last year, George does tremendous work supporting our second language families in navigating all facets of the educational world. From processing new student registrations to interpreting I E P meetings, George has logged more than a thousand thirty-five hours of translation and interpretation services this year. He's attended numerous evening events and translated a hundred and sixty-three documents and messages. The communications and engagement team is excited for what's next. Half of our team has been with W J C C schools for less than a year. So in addition to the accomplishments I've already shared, we've done work with more to come on establishing our team vision to complement our strategic plan, goal and strategies. The communications and engagement team will thoughtfully collaborate to set communication strategy and amplify community involvement, investment and engagement with W J C C schools. Our vision statement reflects how we will continue to make progress across all strategies and support our colleagues in their work as well. As I mentioned earlier, we have a great opportunity to elevate all of our existing efforts by strategically and systemically tackling communications and engagement. Success over the coming year will be evidenced by a newly developed staff intranet that will easily allow staff to access the tools and information they need, enhanced engagement with our community, a launched teacher supply shop, expanded content creation and media relations to share the stories of our students and staff and continued support of building and division leaders through training and resources. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That completes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Any questions or comments, Ms. Emily?
I just have a comment about emailing and hopefully this is something we can look into for the future. I don't, I know it's been a tough year, but it's really difficult to, um, sometimes when you email staff and I was always under the impression twenty-four to forty-eight hours, you'd get a response, but sometimes it's not. And I know sometimes maybe people were ill or in a meeting or it would be nice if there was some kind of system that we would get something back saying, so, so's out of the office or, um, you're number thirty-three out of fifty, something, but to hear nothing. And I do get a lot of, um, a lot of my constituents will say, you know, should I, you know, C C their boss now since it's been a week and they haven't got back? So there's something going on with emailing, uh, maybe things are getting caught in spam. I don't know, but I wish there was a better way or, uh, that once something went out, it's pertinent that we, that people get an answer back at a reasonable. I don't know what a reasonable amount of time is and I know it's been difficult this year, but hopefully for next year because I do still hear we need to tweak some of the communication.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. That's a, that's a, one of those areas where it takes constant improvement and just to keep you, keep you right in front of our faces and, uh, not lose sight of our need to respond and respond in a, in a matter-of-fact way. Yeah.
Oh, let me say, that's not a communications department issue. That would be a system issue in terms of, of revisiting with, with staff and trying to be customer-friendly.
All right. Well, Ms. Wall, thank you. You've been a fantastic addition to the team. I want to say I'm really grateful that you've chosen us. And I'm really bad the other way around, so thank you. And I really appreciate your presentation. It was a great reminder that we just need to remain people-focused. That's what I took away from your presentation. Thank you so much. All right, uh, item nine point one, review revisions to policy E F B free and reduce price food services.
And I believe, uh, Mr. Schneppes is coming back to present the changes in this policy. And, uh, Ms. Yu and I believe is up at this table next.
Good evening again. Uh, tonight, agenda, uh, review of the revision policy E F B supports goal six of the strategic plan. This review is because the state has mandated that we do not pursue legal action for students or parents who are in debt to us for, for school lunches. It, it coincides with the V S B A policy and there are some things in this, in our polit, in the V S B A policy that we've included in the regulations. Um, some of those things are you are allowed to charge at least two meals before you are provided an alternative meal. So students will get an alternative meal, but they will only be allowed to charge two meals. And then we, we will, there's nothing, there's nothing in the regulations that says we can't pursue the debt, but we cannot pursue it through a suit.
Okay, and we typically see, I'm looking for. And we typically see, I'm looking for the state code that supports that. Do you know off the top of your head which code that is?
Think in the background to the policy, it mentions the state code, Mr. Dowell.
Is it in the background? I didn't see it in the green sheet. Okay, yeah, that'd be good, just to have that ready for our next meeting. That'd be great, okay. Anything else on this item?
Just that when we talked about this, we, Mrs. Young and I, that was one of our question about the lawsuit, and it is a, like Mr. Schneip said, it's a state regulation, but it doesn't mean that, you know, we asked the question, so, you know, our emails sent saying you, you owe money, you know, definitely that, that communication goes on. The, the effort to get people to do the right thing and pay, when they can, and pay for their meals happens. So it's just, you're not gonna be filing a suit against someone.
Yeah, the states erected a wall.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so just wanted to clarify that, because I know we had a speaker tonight talking about it.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Are we still, are we still moving forward providing free food for everybody? Is, is that?
I believe that ends this year.
Yes, that is scheduled to end this year, the free meals for all students.
In company, like inclusive of next school year or before next?
It's finishing now, I believe.
It's finishing now, okay, so then this will become...
Right, the waiver expires on June thirty, unless for some reason it's extended by USDA.
And as a reminder, two of our schools are CEP, so those students eat free every day, can eat free every day.
You remind the listening audience what CEP stands for?
Community eligible, community eligible provision, which means they are, they meet a certain standard when it comes to how many are free and reduced at their school, and therefore each student may be, or is able to eat free at those, at those two schools.
Thank you. All right, nine point two, review revisions to policy DJ purchasing.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Yu is going to take the next one. My apologies, the code reference is actually in this policy and not in the last one, my mistake.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This agenda item is to revise our policy DJ purchasing. The proposed changes would align the policy with our current practices, specifically the following items: changing the threshold in number two for purchases involving professional services such as accounting or engineering from one hundred thousand to fifty thousand; changing the upper limit amount in number four from one hundred thousand to fifty thousand for our small purchases guidelines. We have also recommended removing the different levels for the small purchase guidelines outlined in the bulleted list under number four as these are defined in detail within the regulation for this policy. As you know, our practice has been to bring all initial purchases to the board that amount to one hundred thousand dollars or greater, so number seven has been updated to reflect this. And lastly, number ten has been updated to reflect that a monthly report is provided to the board for all purchases over twenty-five thousand. Legal and cross-references have also been updated, and our attorney has reviewed as well as the policy committee and recommend approval of the policy as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I saw this earlier, and so I was just, just curious, just throwing it out there. The way it reads to me, bullet point seven, the board will approve. Does that read to anybody else like... The board's not considering, the board will act on this, and by act, I mean the action will be to approve it. You see my point? I know that's not necessarily what was reviewed, but I, I see that.
If the board didn't approve it, then they wouldn't make the purchase, right?
But this is saying, to me, as I read it, is saying that per policy, the board must approve.
Oh.
So we, we wrote it to say the board approves any and all? To give?
Considers?
Considers?
But this is, this is suggesting that we must bring them before your approval.
Right.
So it's hard to best word it to capture that, but I get what you're saying.
The intent, I understand the intent, but...
The board must approve.
That's even stronger.
Oh, you're right.
Or you could, you could just say the board approves. Anyway, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, we, we know the intent. I'm just curious what you guys thought.
I don't think anyone, if we don't approve something, is gonna say. Says you have to approve.
Right. Okay. Figured I'd drop that bomb.
I did not come up with that.
Okay, all right. All good with that one, guys? Purchasing? Can we go on to vendor relations, DJG?
This policy has minor verbiage updates mostly, but we are also recommending the removal of authorization for principals to arrange for vendor demonstrations and require an authorization to be done by the superintendent or superintendent's designee. We are also recommending the removal of the specific reference to an item in the regulation for policy DJ as the item is listed as a cross-reference at the end of the policy. Therefore, the cross-references have been updated, and our attorney has reviewed as well as the policy committee and recommend approval of the policy as presented.
Looking around, I'm not seeing any issues with it as presented. Ms. Hummel, any, okay? All good? All right, moving on. Nine four, review creation of policy G A H.
This agenda item is for a proposed new policy, G A H, School Employee Conflict of Interests, which we have modeled after the V SBA policy. We are recommending the addition of this policy as all employees should be aware of the State and Local Government Conflict of Interests Act, which creates uniform standards of conduct for all public employees and officials. The policy is meant to provide an overview of some of the information contained in the act and provides employees with information on where to seek opinions regarding the application of the act. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And there's a V SBA policy that this was modeled after?
Yes, sir.
I see that, yeah, okay. Our policy committee was happy with this? All right. Item nine point five, policy J F C, student conduct. This is what I was remembering.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron, once again. This is a little confusing because we have discussed all three of the next three policies as part of the Student Code of Conduct. It has to do with the order of, of our agenda in the meetings. So these are all embedded into the Code of Conduct. The first one, policy J F C, is the Student Conduct Policy. You find it on pages nine through fifteen of the Student Code of Conduct. We've, we've just gone through that. These are brought annually for your approval. The revisions that are in this policy mirror what you saw in the Code of Conduct. The cross-references have also been updated for the policy itself.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I have one small question that I had written down earlier and didn't mention when we were discussing it in the context of seven point whatever. Can I, can I ask it now?
Please.
Uh, please. In, in seven point one, it, I'm just curious why there's a ten thousand dollar cost associated with the Code of Conduct?
We print multiple copies. We also now have it available electronically for parents to acknowledge electronically, but we make sure there are multiple copies available in the buildings. Each teacher gets a printed copy so that they have it accessible.
Thank you.
Good question. Any others? I think we're happy with that one. Ms. Boujou?
Policy J F C C, student conduct on buses. There is no actually, actual revision recommendation to the policy wording. We have updated the cross-references. It has been reviewed, and it has been by the policy committee and by the attorney.
And nine point seven?
J F C D is our weapons policy. As we discussed, it does have additions to the wording of the policy to fully cover items listed in state code. We also updated the cross-references. The additions made, as you saw, includes, the inclusion of stun gun, the specificity about a knife greater than three inches, and a number of additional items that are considered weapons.
Attempted to ask, have we seen stun guns in our schools or tasers or anything like that?
We have had tasers.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Boujou.
Sure.
Okay, how are we feeling? We're good? Okay, ten point one is now...
Do you want some motion?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. The motion ten point one is, I'm, a motion to accept the recommendation from the superintendent to reassign employee number one oh five four eight three from the role of administrator to the role of classroom teacher to include the appropriate salary placement on the instructional scale for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. That's the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. We'll forego any discussion and ask Ms. Robinson if you'll take the role?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Item ten point two, I think we have a motion on that as well?
We have a motion, I'd like to amend the motion to read, I move to amend the personnel actions and accept the superintendent's recommendation for an administrative appointment of employee one zero six eight eight to serve in the role principal effective June eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and in carrying forward into the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year with the contract year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-two, in addition to the other personnel actions as presented.
Perfect.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Ordigo. We're gonna forego discussion on this as well. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Dr. Beers? Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. And thank you to everyone who had to, had to do that together at the last minute. Thank you so much. Item ten point three, approval of purchase requests and budget transfer for Matthew Whaley boiler replacements. Say that five times fast. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve to repair the boilers at a cost of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars be transferred to the operations equipment replacement line from instructional salaries and benefits.
And can we also mention the Warwick Mechanical Group? Under contract?
It's that recommended action.
Oh, sorry, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the Matthew Whaley, Matthew Whaley boiler replacements under the annual contract, number nineteen dash one three seven three nine to Warwick Mechanical Group in the amount of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and the associated budget transfer.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Hunley.
Second.
And Dr. Beers for the second. Any discussion here? Yeah, I was, I, I really wanted to hear that inoperable meant this thing's not going back together. Gotta be done, okay. With that, Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. Board member comments. Can we start with Ms. Hummel?
I don't have any comments tonight, thanks.
Ms. Hunley?
Yes, I attended a viewing of film called Only Us, night before last, through three E restoration. It was a presentation on social displacement, and there were a lot of agencies there, I think, that would be, I'll be sharing later, some things that would be helpful, I think, seeing some of them to collaborate with us to help some of our children, especially with mental health issues and just navigating the system for some of our special-edged students that move to different places. So I'll share that with the board another time, but it was very interesting and informative to see all those agencies out there that really want to help us.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Ordigo?
I just want, I'll, I'll be very brief, because I know it's late, but I just want to congratulate everyone vision-wide on getting to the end of the school year, most especially our high school seniors. This is a very exciting time for them, and I'm sure a little bittersweet for all their parents, but they all deserve lots of congratulations for everything it takes to get someone graduated, and of course, every student is moving on to something new in our division, so that's exciting, and our teachers and staff, of course, deserve lots of praise for everything that they've done this year. I hope that everyone has a happy, healthy, safe, fun, and relaxing summer.
Dr. Beers?
I echo everything that you have said, but I also would like to add that I very much appreciate it, the updates on our goals one and three of the, of our strategic plan. A lot going on, and, and I think it is also appreciated by those who are, participate in either one of those. I must also say, trying not to be too excited, but I really think we are taking the first step to provide additional opportunities for preschool students and and that's all I'd like to say about that. I'm just, I'm, I, I am glad to see that, and we're, we're moving forward on that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Thank you, Dr. Beers. I want to say that I've really missed our Ms. Cook and Ms. Young. I'm looking at the board this evening, and we got two empty spots, and really do value each one of you. I really do, the insight and the perspective that you bring, and when we, when we don't have two board members with us, we feel that, too. And to that end, I am committed to reaching out to Ms. Young and Ms. Cook and sharing with them and making sure that they reviewed the presentation from RRMM and, and getting their perspective on that. I think we definitely heard a majority will of the board here and what we would like to communicate to our funding partners, that first step, as Dr. Beers has mentioned a few times. So I'll, I'll be doing that. To our speakers, thank you again for coming out at an odd hour, and for when we said seven o'clock, we didn't start till seven twenty. That's just kind of how the, the evening went and how important the other matters were that we had to take on before we started our, our work session, but thank you for coming, thank you for speaking, you've been heard as always, and, and I, I want to ask, put you on the spot a little bit, but Dr. Heron, if you could respond to parents that take issue with content in our libraries, can you, can you share the process?
Basically, we have a, a policy that, that determines the process. If a parent has a concern with a library book or content in the curriculum, there is a policy and there's a form that we provide to parents who are able to fill that in and bring it, send it to us, and then a committee is, is formed to review that concern.
Thank you. I think for my part, and this will come to you and an SBQ, is the review of books before they even hit the shelf. What does that look like? I think that would be helpful for me as we're communicating with our community members. I have a feeling we're gonna start getting some emails, so it'll be good to know what that looks like on the front end. And then I just wanted to say thank you to all of our present, presenters, presentationers, presenters this evening. Just very well-done, well-thought-out presentations, and again, it, it really reminded me personally that we need to be about the business of people and putting people first and, and engaging in that way. And we saw that through each of the presentations, and the strategic goals really, they were remarkable. There's a lot, a lot good happening in our school division, and it was refreshing to see that and be reminded of that. Yeah, be safe. End of, end of the year, I was out somewhere, I can't remember where I was last evening, but the boys of summer, I mean, there are kids everywhere. It was, it was late, too, like eleven o'clock, kids everywhere. Just be safe, just be safe, and, you know, make, make good, reasonable decisions. Think about what, what mom would ask of you as you're out there enjoying your summer. All right, let me move on to, we have our agenda items set for the next regular meeting, and we'll move on to upcoming events. So tomorrow, June eighth, Duke of Gloucester Street Parade for War Hill High School at five... June eighth, Duke of Gloucester Street Parade for War Hill High School at five thirty. Jamestown High School graduation ceremony on the tenth at nine AM, Kaplan Arena, at William and Mary, and then Lafayette same day at two PM, War Hill same day at seven PM. And then our policy committee will be meeting on the sixteenth virtually at eight thirty. And then for upcoming meetings, on the twenty-first of June, five PM at the Annex for closed session here. And then our regular meeting next door in the gym at James Blair at six thirty. That's the twenty-first of June. And then on the twelfth of July, closed session here, and then work session and action items here as well, four o'clock and four thirty. All right. With that, we are adjourned.